It's Here and Now. A group of Democrat-led states is suing the Department of Education. They're objecting to an order that schools certify compliance with the Trump administration's efforts to root out diversity practices. The White House alleges that many common diversity practices in schools represent illegal discrimination. States that don't comply risk losing their federal funding. Erica Meltzer is reporting on this for our editorial partner Chalk Beat, the nonprofit education news outlet. Welcome, Erica.
Thanks for having me.
So let's start with what exactly the Trump administration wants states to do.
So the Trump administration, in early April, sent a letter to all of the states saying that they needed to certify their compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, which is actually a pretty normal thing that states do all the time. But they also wanted the states to certify compliance with the Trump administration's interpretation based on a Supreme Court decision from a couple of years ago that had to do with college admissions. And that decision said that you can't use race in college admissions. And the Trump administration is extending that to cover a really wide range of practices. And there's been a lot of confusion about what exactly they think isn't allowed. And there's a lot of disagreement about how legally sound that interpretation is. And so that's what led some of the states to say, we don't want to certify compliance because we disagree with you legally and we're not even sure what you're asking us to say we won't do.
So what are the -- so give us a quick rundown of who's in this suit and what they're sort of legally alleging.
So this is the coalition of states that has been involved in a lot of litigation against the Trump administration. Big states like California, New York, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Michigan, Colorado. There's 18 states in total. And they are alleging that this request is illegal, that it didn't go through proper requirements. And they want the courts to find that it's null and void, that they have no duty to comply, and that they also have no duty to go out and investigate individual school districts to figure out if they've complied.
Erica, one of the things that was interesting to me about this -- so let's backtrack. The Education Department has given states until -- had given states until last Thursday to sign a document certifying compliance. But that requirement's on hold in response to earlier lawsuits by national teachers unions, civil rights groups. So this was interesting. Why another lawsuit if other people had sued and the requirement was already on hold?
So the other lawsuits come from, as you said, civil rights groups and teachers unions. And some of the harms that they were alleging were ultimately a little bit indirect. Like because of this requirement, school districts are changing their policies. And they did something that we, the NAACP, feels is harmful to Black students. But it's not clear that if the federal policy changed, that the school district would then backtrack because everyone is operating in this environment where they're wondering what's going to come next from Washington. There was also -- I don't think we have time to go through all the sort of legal complications of this. But there was a lot of different reasoning that different judges in the different lawsuits used. What the states can say is that they are much more directly harmed if this policy goes forward. So if those injunctions in those other cases are overturned on appeal, the states are saying we could lose billions of dollars. And it's a very direct harm. We are the actors who have been told we have to do something, and we are the ones who stand to directly harm if it goes forward.
So both coming at it from another angle and hedging bets a little bit, is that fair?
Yeah, I think that's correct. And because I think we've seen a lot of times when injunctions are issued at the district court level, sometimes they're overturned on appeal. As these things are going up to the Supreme Court, we're finding different -- some of the cases are prevailing, some are not. And so I think it's just, yeah, as you said, hedging bets.
So Erica, the president's already signed an executive order seeking to dismantle the Education Department. There are layoffs, buyouts that have reduced the agency's staff by about half. What do the staffing reductions mean for the agency's ability to even enforce compliance with the Trump administration's interpretation of the case and its new DEI rules?
This is a really great question. And the Office for Civil Rights has been one of the most hard-hit by these staffing reductions. But what we've seen to date is that we're not seeing the office undertake the same types of investigations on these DEI cases that they historically would have taken. In the past, they might have spent, you know, weeks or months interviewing people, looking at documents, trying to understand all sides of an issue before they came up with a determination that something had or hadn't gone wrong in a particular school district. And what we're seeing now is that they're doing these directed complaints where they hear about something, maybe a conservative activist group raises it, maybe there's media reports of something going on in a school district, and they sort of very quickly make a determination based on surface-level publicly available information and then try to move forward with that. That's what we're seeing, for example, in the Title IX.
I've got to jump in there. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, Erica. I'm going to jump in there. Erica Meltzer is a national editor at Chalk Beat, the nonprofit education news outlet. Thanks.
Thank you.
Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Tiziana Deering in Boston.
And I'm Scott Tong in Washington, DC. This is Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and Viking, committed to exploring the world in comfort, offering small-ship experiences with a shore excursion included in every port and programs designed for cultural enrichment. Learn more at viking.com.
Public radio is in uncharted waters. The Trump administration has issued an executive order to stop federal funding for NPR. That money supports fact-based news and information along with vital emergency resources. Find out how you can voice your support for public radio. Go to radioiq.org and click the Protect Public Media Funding banner. And protect the programs you enjoy right here on Radio IQ.
I don't think it's just that mainstream economists have doubts. I would say virtually all economists are beyond skeptical to the point of sort of dismissing the possibility that tariffs, at least as they're being imposed here, could bring back, A, that many jobs because of a lot of automation, or B, that the jobs would be all that good?
I'm Michael Barbaro. That's today on The Daily from the New York Times.
Every weekday at 6:30 on Radio IQ.
You're listening to Radio IQ on WBTF Roanoke, WRQ Charles City, Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville, WVTW Charlottesville, WVTR Marion, WISE FM Wise, WQIQ Spotsylvania, WIQR Lexington, WEHC Emory, HD3 of WURV Richmond, and on 92.5 Richmond and 94.9 Fredericksburg. Radio IQ, a listener-supported community service of Virginia Tech, on your smart speaker and online at radioiq.org.
Funding for Here and Now comes from MathWorks, creator of MATLAB and Simulink software, accelerating the pace of engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com.
From NPR and WBUR Boston, I'm Tiziana Deering.
And I'm Scott Tong. This is Here and Now. Coming up, Israel approves new plans to capture the entire Gaza Strip. We'll get the latest.
Also, the Department of Homeland Security says an ICE operation in Oklahoma City last month was lawful, but a family says they were the wrong targets.
Once they realized the people inside weren't the people they were looking for, these officers still went ahead and seized a bunch of their property, including their phones and their computers.
And a conclave to pick the next pope starts Wednesday, when Cardinals hole up for a secret vote in the Sistine Chapel.
There are more Cardinals from all over the world.
But it doesn't give you any clue as to who they might choose.
Thank you.
Coming up, Here and Now.
I'm Nicholas S. Hagan. I'm Nicholas S. Hagan.
The news is first.
I'm Nicholas S. Hagan. 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 Good afternoon and welcome to our 2 o'clock session of the Roanoke City Council. Good afternoon and welcome to our 2 o'clock session of the Roanoke City Council. I'm pleased to welcome Reverend Carter Monday, pastor of Redemption Church, to open with our invocation. And following the invocation, I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But before we do any of that, the moment we've all been waiting for, the roll call, which I keep forgetting.
All right. Vice Mayor McGuire.
Here.
Mr. Nash.
Here.
Mr. Volason.
Here.
Ms. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Hagan.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones is absent today. And Mayor Cobb.
Here. And a quorum is present. Now, I'll welcome Reverend Monday and invite us all to stand, please.
Let's pray together. Father, thank you for being the author of life and the sustainer of everything and everyone. We praise you for not being distant from us, even though our hearts often wander and we try to live as if we're in charge or in control. You haven't given up on us. Instead, you sent your son, Jesus, into the broken world, not to condemn it, but to redeem it and to save it. So thank you for that, God. Thank you that Jesus entered into time and space and lived the life we should live but don't, and then died the death we deserve. And thank you that he rose from the dead, which we celebrated at Easter a few weeks ago, and he defeated death for us. And God, I pray that in that vein, through that grace, that you would guide our city leaders with humility and courage and wisdom, especially in this city council meeting. And as they carry the responsibility of decision-making, God, I pray that you would help them seek the good of our people and the flourishing of our city, that they would be good managers of our money and stewards of this great city that you've given us. Please give them the ability and endurance that they need to steward our resources well and to act in good faith and lead with justice and mercy in a similar way that Jesus has. So God, we ask that you bless this meeting and bless the voices that are going to be heard today. Bless all of our neighbors in this city, especially those who feel unseen and weary or without hope today. We thank you that we can even come to you in this way. We pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This time, I'll ask Councilmember Hagan to read our motion to certify our closed meeting.
All right. I move, with respect to any closed meeting just concluded, that each member of city council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in a motion by which any closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the motion passes. Couple of announcements this afternoon. The Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for various vacancies on council-appointed authorities, boards, commissions, and committees. You can access a list of these and more details about each of these boards and commissions through the city's website at roanokeva.gov. And you can also online complete an application. We move now to presentations and acknowledgements. And we're going to start out with council shout-outs of things that we've -- good things we've seen in the community over the last couple of weeks. And then we'll move into several proclamations that we have today. And I'm going to start down with Ms. Powers.
Yes, I'll do a shout-out to all of our nonprofit organizations. I know this Saturday, there was an event, a fundraiser event for Renovation Alliance and just everything that a lot of these organizations do together. They partner together to help do things for people in our city or in our valley that are less fortunate than the rest of us. So a shout-out to our nonprofits.
Thank you. Ms. Volason.
My shout-out is to the Roanoke Regional Airport. I'm not sure if everybody heard, but we did get a second flight to Chicago, this one being operated by American Airlines, which will start in August and can be purchased starting at May 5th. I sound like a commercial. It's because I want you all to fly out of ROA so that we can continue to get more flights like this.
Thank you. Mr. Nash?
Yeah, my shout-out goes to our Department of Social Services. On Friday evening, they held a foster family banquet to honor individuals that participated in our foster care program and kinship as well. And I mean, it was a good amount of people there. It was also to honor our staff, you know? And I told them, I know sometimes it's hard to leave work at work when you work in a job like that. Some of the things you see, some of the cases you have, and their average caseloads are like 800 kids. Like, it's a lot, right? So a shout-out to them, and I thank them for all that they do to support our vulnerable citizens.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two really quick. I want to say thank you to everyone. My Neighborhood Association, on the 26th, we did a cleanup at the Gish House in Highland Park, which our neighborhood organization rents from the city but takes care of that property. And so I really appreciate everyone in the neighborhood that came out. And I want to say also thank you. The very next day, on the 27th, was Pride in the Park. So to everyone that helped pull that together, came out, I'm really proud to live in a city that values diversity and inclusion and has not one but two prides. So if you missed this one, there's another one coming this fall. And just want to say thank you to everyone that pulled off what I thought was a really successful event.
Thank you. Mr. Hagan?
I'm going to have a shout-out to Fire EMS. We had a slight gas leak in my apartment a couple of weeks ago. Everybody's fine. But at 1:00 AM, we called Fire EMS, just having them take a look, and they found a slight gas leak. So, you know, shout-out to them and their amazing response time of like 2, 3 minutes, if that. So shout-out to you guys.
Thank you. And I'll conclude with a shout-out to our city departments and particularly Human Resources Department for their leadership in our teen apprentice program. We had the graduation of teen apprentices. There were 19 that graduated this year. That's the highest number we've had in any of our nine cohorts. They were supported by probably eight from cohort number eight. And for those of you who don't know about this program, it was started as part of our Star City Strong initiative -- or, sorry, Star City Safe to help reduce overall crime and violence in our community by -- through a preventative effort. And the youth go through an eight-week training with Human Resources for soft and hard skills. During that time, they learn about all of the different departments in the city. And then at the graduation, they're actually drafted by local city departments to work in those departments for several months, and in many cases are hired on in those departments as permanent employees. So kudos to HR, particularly Jeffrey Powell, who had the vision in the first place, and John Sanders, Jennifer White, Narik Bailey, so many that helped to make this happen. It's an extraordinary program. All right, we're going to move on to several proclamations, and I'm going to invite Vice Mayor McGuire to head to the podium. And I'll ask Jillian Papa, our new director of planning and building development, to join him.
Can I bring my own crowd?
You bring whoever you want to, Jillian.
Come on up. This is my first one of these from this side, so.
Do I just jump right in, Mayor, and read this?
Just jump right in. All right. Well, thank you, everyone. All right. City of Roanoke proclamation, Building Safety Month. Whereas the city of Roanoke is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. Whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety, property maintenance, and fire prevention code officials, permit center technicians, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals and laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. Whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes and standards to protect us and the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. Whereas modern building codes and standards include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas the theme for Building Safety Month 2025 is Game On, to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity and encourages us all to get involved and raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. Now therefore I, Terry McGuire, Vice Mayor of the City of Roanoke, Virginia, acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us in protecting lives and property and do hereby proclaim May 25th throughout this great eight-time All-America City as Building Safety Month.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can probably get a photo somewhere. No photos today?
So let's have -- would you like to say something first, Jillian? Introduce your team, then we'll get a picture after all that.
Well, thank you for having us this afternoon and acknowledging such important work that this is a snapshot of folks here that are so integral to what was mentioned in the proclamation. I'm so proud of this team. We have members of planning, building, and development. We have our building official, Tommy Hahn, deputy building official, Nancy Morgan. We have our fire marshal, Becky Smith, our permit center manager, Valerie Staton, our permit technician, senior permit technician, Adrian Davis, customer service specialist. We have our deputy fire marshal, Bobby Russell, with us, and there are so many more involved in this work. So thank you for acknowledging us today.
Thank you, and thanks for all the work you do. Any council members have anything you want to add before we do a photo?
I'd just say thank you so much. I do know the work you do too, and I know how hard you work, and we do appreciate the safety that you ensure that all of our buildings are safe. Thank you.
All right, we'll do a photo. So if you all want to come up this direction.
Everyone up front, I need you to shift this way. There, you're good. That's great, actually. Perfect. All right.
Next, I'm going to invite Councilman Hagan to head to the podium for our Preservation Month proclamation. I'll ask again Director Jillian Papa and your team to come up and join him.
All right. Awesome. So this is proclamation of the city of Roanoke for National Preservation Month 2025. Whereas preservation work strengthens communities, breathes new life into neighborhoods, supports a healthier planet, and builds a more just and connected society. Whereas there is no denying the role preservationists play in protecting historic spaces while meeting the needs of communities for the present and future. Whereas we celebrate the power of place and the countless ways, big and small, that preservation creates. And whereas harnessing the power of place is the theme for National Preservation Month 2025, co-sponsored by the city of Roanoke and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now therefore I, Nicholas S. Hagan, member of city council, on behalf of Joseph El Cobb, mayor of the city of Roanoke, Virginia, encourage all citizens to recognize and participate in this special observance and do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 throughout this great eight-time All-America City as National Preservation Month.
Thank you.
Do you want to speak? I think I'm going to introduce Kathryn Gray, our principal planner. She's also currently the agent to the Architectural Review Board. Also, Collette Baumgartner, our project planner. She's also currently the agent to the Architectural Review Board. Also, Collette Baumgartner, our project planner. Baumgartner, our project planner, our newest addition to the planning team to help accept this proclamation.
Thank you so much. So preservation has and does continue to strengthen our community every day, and we do appreciate the opportunity to celebrate that with the community. We have created a webpage at planroanoke.org, and community members have the ability to nominate places to celebrate throughout the month of May. And so please do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Nash and Ballson, if you'd move over just a little bit. That's great. Thank you very much. And here we go.
Councilman Nash is now making his way to the podium for a proclamation for Resilience Week, and I'll invite Sarah Kate Brown Miller, Prevention and Wellness Specialist from Blue Ridge Behavioral Health, as well as other folks related to this proclamation to please join Councilman Nash.
Whereas the City of Roanoke recognizes that a strong society depends on supporting the development of strong brain architecture, health, and well-being of children to create a foundation for lifelong productivity and responsible citizenship. Whereas adverse childhood experiences, or ACES, are stressful or traumatic experiences such as household violence, substance abuse, neglect, divorce, incarceration of a parent, or sexual slash physical assault that can disrupt the safe, stable, and nurturing environment children need to thrive. ACES can cause toxic stress, which can negatively affect brain development and lead to a lifetime of physical, mental, economic, educational, and social challenges. Whereas ACES have been linked to public health problems such as obesity, addiction, hypertension, mental illness, and shortened life expectancy. Those persons having experienced four or more ACES are 500% more likely to become victims of domestic violence, 443% more likely to use illegal drugs, and 1,525% more likely to attempt suicide. Whereas trauma-informed care is a principle-based cultural, culture change process aimed at shifting a system or community's philosophy, policies, programs, and practices to be more empathetic and focused on promoting resiliency and protective factors. And whereas the Roanoke Prevention Alliance, the Resiliency Collective, and the Roanoke Valley Trauma-Informed Community Network are initiatives of community stakeholders dedicated to developing a community-wide effort to end childhood trauma by building A, awareness under, around childhood and adult trauma, and B, resilience in the aftermath of trauma, and C, resiliency among all citizens. Now therefore I, Councilman Fajon Nash.
You're doing great.
Now therefore I, Councilman Fajon Nash, give this proclamation of, on behalf of the City of Roanoke, Virginia, encouraging citizens to become informed about the impacts of ACES and toxic stress, promote prevention, healing, and resiliency in children, adults, and communities in order to build resilient people and stronger communities, and do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th through 10th throughout this great eight-time All-American City as Resiliency Week.
I just want to say thank you all for this opportunity to declare this Resiliency Week. The Roanoke Prevention Alliance was established as a nonprofit to help reduce substance abuse in youth in Roanoke City, and then we formed the Resiliency Collective as a subcommittee because we believe that resilient people build stronger communities. So this was created as a week to celebrate your resilience and build your resilience in people around you. So we have some great events coming up. Tomorrow, we have a Chipotle fundraiser at the Towers Chipotle from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. And then Wednesday, we have a resiliency bingo night with free dinner. And then Friday, we have a fun yoga activity for elementary schoolers, which will be a great opportunity. So just want to say thank you to all of our partnering organizations such as the Roanoke Valley Trauma-Informed Community Network, the Roanoke City Public Libraries, and the Roanoke City Public Schools. So thank you.
Thank you. And if we could have the three of you, please introduce yourselves as part of this effort.
My name's Jess Bookout, and I'm a volunteer with the Roanoke Valley Trauma-Informed Community Network.
Hello.
I'm Jeffrey Wood, and I'm a children's librarian for the City of Roanoke.
And I'm Josh Johnson with Roanoke City Public Schools, and I'm on the RPA board.
Thank you. All right. If you all want to come up, we'll get a photo. Development Center, and Angela Vernon, Executive Performance Administrator with City of Roanoke. And this is a proclamation for National Small Business Week. Whereas America's progress has been driven by pioneers who think big, take risks, and work hard. Whereas small businesses are the economic powerhouse and the heart and soul of our communities and keep America on the cutting edge as small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstone of our nation's promise. Whereas small business owners and Main Street businesses have energy and a passion for what they do. Whereas the City of Roanoke, Virginia, and the Roanoke City Council celebrate our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. Whereas according to the U.S. Small Business Administration, there are 33.2 million small businesses in the United States, which employ 61.7 million Americans. Whereas when we support small businesses, jobs are created and local communities preserve their unique culture. Whereas from the storefront shops that anchor our Roanoke downtown business community, to the trendy coffee shops and innovative restaurants, to the unique boutiques and industrial technology solutions in our business community, to the manufacturing firms and retail store establishments, and to the many varied small business types. Whereas the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies. And whereas the City of Roanoke acknowledges, recognizes, and supports small businesses and entrepreneurs, and joins in this national effort to help America's small businesses do what they do best, generate jobs, and ensure that our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today. Now therefore I, Joseph El Cobb, Mayor of the City of Roanoke, Virginia, do hereby proclaim May 4th through May 10th, 2025, throughout this eight-time All-America City as National Small Business Week. Would you like to say a few?
Good afternoon, Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor McGuire, members of council. We thank you for this opportunity to recognize our business community, and we do want to invite all small business owners to come out tonight, located at Sidewinders from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. This is an opportunity for us to celebrate you and recognize your efforts and contributions to the community. So please come out and join us.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for this, Mayor Cobb, and council members, Vice Mayor. I'm the director of the Small Business Development Center, and small businesses are the heart of what we do, and they're the heart of the City of Roanoke. They're also the heart of Virginia. They drive Virginia's economy. They drive the nation's economy. But in Virginia, small business is big business. So thank you for taking the opportunity to celebrate with us this national week and to proclaim it as the city's. Thank you.
tonight, partnership with City of Roanoke and Sidewinders. We may end up seeing the largest small business line dance in the history of... I must be tired. There's like flat line of reaction today. Anyway, Angela, thank you for helping coordinate that, and Sidewinders for hosting it this afternoon.
And also too, I do miss if you can acknowledge your sponsors, co-sponsors for the event.
Thank you, Mayor Cobb. Just want to ensure that we acknowledge our co-sponsors for this event, which is Anthem and Member One. And so without them, this event would not be possible, and certainly to our venue sponsor, Sidewinders. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And thanks to Anthem and Member One. Next item on our agenda is the Hearing of Citizens Upon Public Matters. The City Council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to the council as she may deem appropriate. Madam Clerk, do we have citizens signed up to speak today?
We do. We have six citizens.
Okay, thank you.
The first two is Denise Carrington and Covington, I'm sorry, and David Garland.
Okay, I don't see Ms. Covington. So Mr. Garland, welcome.
I'm here today, somebody's following up on the public hearing from before about the budget and the real estate tax, and to share concern about what I see as the city's lack of honesty and transparency with the public about the real estate tax rates and the proposed increase, and raise a question about whether the public hearing was improperly held at the same time as the budget hearing. I suspect you all are aware of what I'm going to share, so I'm more so here for the benefit of the press or those watching at home. At the public hearing on the 21st and in other public statements, members of council and the city attorney stated there's no proposal to increase the real estate tax rate and dismiss the resolution as a formality. Mayor Cobb, you said there's not a proposal to increase the tax rate. That's the quote. Mr. Spencer stated, quote, "Anytime our revenue increases by 1% or more, they are required by code to advertise it as a tax increase, even though the tax rate is remaining the same," unquote. And that simply isn't true, and it's frankly, I think, a little deceptive. Code provision 58.1-3321 subsection A states that the locality shall reduce its tax rate if the real estate tax revenue increases over 1%. It's mandatory. It's a done deal for the future rate. That's the starting point of what the state law says and requires in subsection A. An option is then presented in the next section that the locality may, quote, "Increase the rate above the reduced rate required in subsection A if any such increase is deemed to be necessary by the approving governing body, by such governing body," unquote. In that case, public advertisement and the public hearing is required to increase the rate. You're not required to advertise the rate and hold a hearing because of the change in tax revenue. You're required because you're seeking to raise the future rate over the lower rate that would have otherwise been required by law. And you want to raise that rate, of course, because you want more tax money to spend. Now, if you approve the resolution, it will be voting for a real estate tax increase as a matter of law, as a matter of fact, both as to the rate and as to the resulting revenue. But the trickery did its job. WDBJ covered the public hearing by reporting that, quote, "The tax rate will not increase," unquote. WSLS headlined "Tax Rate Is Not Set To Increase," and wrote some present where, quote, "Confused in thinking that the real estate tax rate change was proposed." I came prepared to speak against the increase, but after the comments made prior to the hearing, found myself feeling a little confused by what was deceptive. I was not confused. There is an increase in play because the rate would have to become $1.13 or less unless you approved setting the upcoming rate to increase to $1.22. Now headlines should have read "Tax Rates Going Down By Law Unless Council Votes To Raise It." And with the tax rate set to become $1.13 or less, I strongly oppose the proposal to instead set it at $1.22. And I see my yellow lights. I thought I had five minutes, but I'll skip ahead and just, let's see, I'll skip over the general critique of raising the rates at this time. Obviously, it burdens a lot of people because, you know, having equity in your home is not the same thing as having money in a bank account to pay taxes. So I'll just close by returning to my concerns about the handling of the proposed real estate tax increase for the upcoming year, and draw attention to paragraph B of the same code section. It states that the governing body may increase the rate above the statutorily required reduced rate after public hearing, and states further that the hearing, quote, "Shall not be held at the same time as the annual budget hearing," unquote. I may be incorrect on this. This is a little bit of an add-on. But it seems like that provision may not have been met because it was the same hearing as to both matters at 7:00 o'clock on the 21st. So I'd invite your comment on that as well as whether that may be an issue. And I'll email a copy of my full remarks to all of you later today. Had to leave a little bit out. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, next two speakers.
It would be Clary Norma and Guy Bird.
What was the first name?
Clary.
Clary?
Yes. C-L-A-R-Y.
And what was the last name?
Norma. N-O-R-M-A.
All right. Is that person here? Not Mr. Bird? Welcome.
Good, good, excuse me, got a tickle here. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak. It's not a, something I've done very often, so please understand. I come before you wearing two hats. One is as a citizen of, resident of Roanoke, and also as a director of philanthropy for the Adult Care Center based in Salem, Virginia. And my purpose is to ask the city to reconsider the decision of the Human Services Advisory Board to decline our request for a grant for this year. We seek help in replacing 16-year-old carpeting with our vinyl flooring, which will be easier to navigate for people with wheelchairs and rollators. When I met with the advisory board last Friday morning, I learned that the reason for turning us down was that one document required to accompany our application was missing, and that was my mistake. The application was submitted in January, and the missing document could have been provided at any time had I known it was missing. And indeed, I submitted it on last Friday once I learned that. Roanoke has supported us the last two years, and I hope this is a technicality that does not mean that the city will not support us this year. Founded in 1983, the Adult Care Center is the oldest nonprofit adult medical daycare facility in Virginia. We provide a safe, secure environment for highly dependent adults who are living at home and cannot be left alone unsupervised. Most of our participants have dementia or are physically disabled. They come from lower-income families and need a place to spend time when family caregivers must be at their jobs or need some respite. We're open weekdays from 7:00 in the morning till 6:00 at night. Our $80 daily fee covers breakfast, lunch, and an afternoon snack, medication management as needed, which is important, stimulating activities and exercise, and perhaps most of all, socialization with staff members and other participants. Over half of our participants...
Are you doing this on the web?
Sorry. That's Siri talking to me. Over half of our participants are veterans, and half the people we serve are residents of Roanoke City. Most Roanoke City residents require financial assistance, and we provide that through scholarships. Everyone is expected to come at least two days a week. Most want to attend additional days, so our scholarship program makes that possible. Am I out of time?
You can go ahead and finish.
I'll finish the last sentence. Grants and donations... Grants and donations are a significant portion of our revenue, and we depend on our community for this support. We receive virtually no federal or state funding, and other local municipalities do support us regularly. I hope that the City of Roanoke will continue its support. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. Just a couple of follow-up questions.
Sure.
What was the form that was missing that you-
Budget.
An attached budget?
Yes.
Okay. And what was the previous year's amount that you received and-
From the City of Roanoke?
Yeah.
$2,000.
Okay.
In each mo- in each year.
Okay. And was that your request this year?
No, sir, we requested 10.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We're trying to catch up, get you in the same category with Salem and Roanoke County.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Bill Bestbitch and James Bullington.
Welcome, Mr. Bestbitch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I believe I have three minutes. Year after year, during my time on Roanoke City Council, I was amazed at the number of applications we received for appointments to the school board from well-qualified, competent, conscientious, and committed citizens. One of the reasons they applied was that they could see the opportunity to serve on the school board with other well-qualified, competent, conscientious, committed members of our community. They knew that unlike members of school boards in other cities around Virginia, they would not have to engage in a battle with city council every year to get the funds necessary to provide a high-quality education for the students in our schools, because city council used a funding formula. They knew that they would be reappointed if they wanted to serve another term, if they continued to demonstrate their commitment to Roanoke City Public Schools. They knew that they would not have to rush to spend all their budget before the end of the fiscal year, because city council allowed them to maintain a fund balance. Now I read that you may require the school board to return all or part of its unspent dollars to ensure adequate salary increases for city staff. With level funding and uncertainty about the fund balance, how much of a salary increase will our teachers receive? If you tell me that I must return unspent money this week, why wouldn't I be sure to spend all of it this, excuse me, next week? Why wouldn't I spend it all this week? Sadly, I hear that you may not be willing to reappoint school board members who have the audacity to speak out for what they believe is right. As you well know, we have a serious problem in our nation right now, because too many of members of Congress are unwilling to speak out for what they know is right, if it might mean they risk losing their next election to a candidate who is willing to play "Follow the Leader." I'm sure you do not want that for Roanoke. With no funding formula and no assurance of maintaining a fund balance, will you still get applications from well-qualified, competent, conscientious, committed citizens? Perhaps you will receive applications from people who are willing, maybe even eager, to engage with city council in an annual battle royale. You might even finally create the incentive for citizens who want an elected school board to get the required number of signatures on petitions. Then you will have no control over who serves on the school board, and may very well end up with members who have personal agendas that do not align with the vision of Roanoke City Council and Roanoke City Public Schools. I can't say you must continue to use the funding formula 40%. I can say that you need a formula, you need to stick to it, and you need to continue the policy regarding a fund balance for our schools. Please think about what you're doing, and remember, it is never too late to do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bestbitch.
Mr. Bullington?
Yeah.
Oh, there he is.
Welcome, Mr. Bullington.
Good afternoon, Matt Bullington, Texas Tavern. Nice to see you all again. Firstly, I would like to ask each and every one of you, if you haven't, WDBJ did a great roundtable on the restaurant industry. Took 10 restaurant owners, local, city restaurant owners, a lot of places y'all probably eat and are familiar with, and we talked about our industry and why we oppose the meals tax. You can find the long format, 30 minutes. I would actually ask and implore y'all all to watch that before you place any kind of vote on it. It's instructive. We have had a petition going around, and as of yet, there are, I believe, 2,200 or more people who have signed on to that, opposing the meals tax. We've seen overwhelming support from people, and I say "we," just the restaurant, how we, social media and whatnot, we have gotten the word out. And I think people understand how difficult past five years has been for the restaurant industry, and that's why we've had outpouring of support. We're appreciative of that, but we would like that also to fall upon your ears to understand that. Since it's Small Business Week, so I'm going to respectfully ask city council to find another way and don't increase the meals tax. Don't place this burden on these small, independent businesses that really give Roanoke such its vibrancy and character. If you find that you have to, and there's no choice whatsoever to have to go up on the meals tax, I'm going to respectfully ask this. Do a half percent and commit to a sunset, whether you see that as one or two years. Commit to some certainty. Business leaders, business owners, people need some cer- they need certainty. You can plan with certainty. One of the reasons why you have a lot of uncertainty right now with our national economy is, bet on what the rules are, or what they're going to be. Give us some rules we can live by. So that's why I would ask you to sunset it respectfully, if you have to go up on it. Let us know. I also understand that things could change on the state level. You may have the opportunity to go up 1% potentially, in a year or two, on the sales tax, to fund certain objectives for the city. And I would ask, as if this does come to pass, and the city exercises this, that you would then rescind any increase in the sales tax that went up during this session, if that makes sense. So we don't have additional increase in the meals tax when the sales tax goes up. That would be my ask for that. Ultimately, municipalities, we're going to have to have a, they can't keep turning to the restaurant industry every time they have a shortfall. And I'm not picking on Roanoke for this. There's other ones that are worse. Bristol, Christiansburg, those aren't models, those are really high rates. I would hate to see us go anywhere near that. I would like to see it go down, and restaurants take in more money, and the city makes more money. But we need to have this conversation ultimately, and it's going to have to happen at the state level, how we fund municipalities, instead of disproportionately asking the restaurant industry always to do it, do it in some other ways, potentially, and have this argument. If you keep going to the same well, eventually it runs dry. We either need to take a look at our spending, or look at, look for some new wells. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bullington.
I'll go, Mr. Mayor. I'll go, my son, you don't know the governor's seat, won't you?
Thank you. Is that all of our speakers?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for coming out today. Next on our agenda is the Consent Agenda, and all matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by members of the council and will be enacted by one motion. There is generally no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. So I'll ask for a motion and second on approval of the Consent Agenda.
Move the Consent Agenda?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the Consent Agenda is approved. We have no public hearings as part of our regular agenda, so we'll move to petitions and communications, and I'm pleased to call on Mr. Scott Ramsburg with our Roanoke Valley Regional Cable Television to present their proposed fiscal year 2526 budget. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor McGuire, members of council. I thank you for allowing me time today to update you about Roanoke Valley Television, your civic media resource, and I'd like to begin by showing a very brief highlight of some of the projects over the past year. As you can see, RVTV is focused on generating awareness about some of the good things happening in local government and in today's fragmented media ecosystem that sometimes rewards negativity that can be hard to find, because it's not always served to you. So our mission is to make the community stronger, more engaged, and better informed, and we do this by working as an extension of your employee communications efforts. RVTV works exclusively with our partners in the city, county, and town, as well as your respective school systems. Working with a 1,500-square-foot studio space in the Jefferson Center, our team of five staff members combined over 100 years of experience, working side-by-side with your staff by request whenever the need arises for high-quality communications content. That can not only include video, but also drone services, graphic design, and animation. Just a couple numbers for you. In the past year, we produced 37 hours of media content, facilitated the live streaming of meetings for our partners both here in chambers and out in the field, and provided an overall service value estimated at approximately $2 million. And a few more notable numbers for you to look at. Over the past year, our team has carried out 476 individual projects, while significantly increasing online reach, and been recognized regionally for excellence in production. As you see here, five awards from the Public Relations Society this February, including a best-in-show for some of the efforts that our staff have made. And a big part of our mission is supporting our educational systems. This is done through features highlighting school events, teacher profiles, and the creation of custom education tools. You see there a quote from our school superintendent about our efforts. RVTV is not a static organization. We're continually working together with our partners to meet changing communication needs. A few examples, in the past year, we've added board and council recaps for the city and county, exploring new economic development highlight pieces, career education tools with our school systems, and the expansion of recruiting pieces for our public safety partners. Also, an emphasis on creating duplicate horizontal and vertical content for our social media needs of our partners. We've also invested in equipment to meet the changing needs. This fall, we updated our podcast studio to be more video-friendly per partner requests, and we purchased a stage teleprompter, teleprompter asset, which can be used for the upcoming state of the city address, if you so need it. We continue to be the agency of record for the production and distribution of both content and meetings, which are very important in keeping government transparent and accountable to our citizens, and of course, we know that citizens view many different platforms. RVTV strives to be wherever they are. If you're not regularly seeing RVTV content, I would encourage you to follow us on the platform of your choice. RVTV is overseen by the Regional Cable Television Committee, which consists of an elected representative. Thank you, Vice Mayor McGuire, for serving on that committee, as well as a communications staff member from each partner organization, and a citizen representative. We meet every other month to guide operations. Roanoke County is our fiscal agent and handles human resources as well as IT needs, and I develop the budgets annually, which consists 85% of staffing costs. The majority of equipment and capital expenses are funded right now through cable franchise grants. Our operating budget is split by the three partner agencies as a percentage of population, and note that cable fees do not directly offset our operating costs, but each locality does receive from the state its share of a 5% sales and communications use tax, which does include various communications taxes, including cell phones and cable. Cable subscribers also have 20-cent EG fee wrapped into their taxes to support PEG programming, such as what RVTV provides. In your council packet is a full-line-item summary of RVTV's operating quest for 2026. We're pleased to report that we were able to keep the budget numbers fairly flat compared to previous FY this year has been an outlier, whereby changes to individual staff health insurance plans did allow us to absorb much of our fiscal agent's 3% cost of living adjustment. So the ultimate result of that would be the city's portion of our funding request is $313,933, or 50% of the total operating budget of $622,000. It is the recommendation of our Cable Television Committee to approve the fiscal year 2026 operating budget, and I'll just leave you with, in summary, it's a great pleasure to work with your talented staff on a daily basis. I'd like to specifically call out Carol Corbin for being our liaison, and she's a fantastic communicator, and we're happy to work with her and Katie on her staff. This is an abbreviated list of some of the highlights from the past year. Some of my personal favorites have been the Wasina Bridge Progress highlights, local business profiles, especially the Wasina business profiles, demonstrations for the Transportation Division using some drone and graphic design work, and several new joint series launched with the Fire EMS department. We look forward to many great things to come from this regional partnership, as we continue to be a civic media resource. At this time, I would open the floor. Any questions or comments regarding the budget or presentation?
Thank you, Scott. I'll start down this direction. Any questions down here? All right, this direction. Well, I want to thank you. Every time you produce a video, I share it.
Thank you.
Because it conveys so much about our region and about our city. You all do a great job. I am encountering more people that are saying that they watch city council meetings on RVTV on Saturday, which I think is great, so we appreciate that. Many people have commented on the council catch-up session, so kudos to that, but thank you for your innovative work, your creative work, and we're glad to be a partner with you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. We have one measure, a resolution, and I'll entertain a motion and second on the resolution.
Move the resolution?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution approving the recommendation of the Roanoke Valley Regional Cable Television Committee to approve the annual operating budget for fiscal year 2025 through 2026 for the operation of the regional government and educational access station, Roanoke Valley Television, RVTV, Channel 3, and for the city to provide partial funding.
Thank you. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the resolution is adopted. And thank you. We'll move now to our next two items. The first is a refund of erroneously assessed taxes previously paid by Fleet Master Express Incorporated. There's one measure, an ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and second.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance directing the city treasurer to refund Fleet Master Express, Inc., the principal amount of $237,253.88, together with interest at the rate of 10% from the date such taxes were paid, as a result of the erroneous assessment of certain taxes.
Thank you, and I believe our Commissioner of the Revenue, Mr. LaFountain, is here. If you'd like to come up, and we were just commenting, we don't often see these, would you be able to give us some greater context?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor McGuire, members of council. In the course of working with this business, we ascertained that the information that we received from them last year was incorrect, and we worked to rectify the situation with them and ensure that we got proper information from them for this year as well, and unfortunately, as they had paid, despite our attempts to rectify the situation last year, we have to go through this process to abate the taxes that were paid and issue the refund.
Any questions from council? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on this ordinance?
Vice Mayor McGuire?
Aye.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item three is a refund of erroneously assessed taxes previously paid by Agastya Kahl LLC. There's one measure, an ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and a second.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
Yes. An ordinance directing the city treasurer to refund Agastya Kahl LLC, the principal amount of $42,000. of $42,631.77, together with interest at the rate of 10% from the date such taxes were paid as a result of the erroneous assessment of certain taxes.
Thank you. Anything you'd like to add on this one, Mr. LaFountain?
Similar situation. The business had to provide an estimate of receipts for their activities, and then when the, well, an estimate of what the assessment would be for their activities, and then when the actuals came in, we had to, again, conduct an abatement and provide a refund.
All right, thank you. Any questions from council?
I have a question.
Yes.
Are these two businesses connected anyway, or are they separate businesses all on their own?
They're separate.
They're separate, okay. It was just weird, like, y'all have never seen it before, and then they're both on the agenda at the same time. I was just wondering if they were connected.
All right. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Maguire?
Aye.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. Thank you. Next item is reports of city officers and the city manager, and I'll call on our city manager to introduce this afternoon's briefing.
Thank you, Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor Maguire, and city council members. I am going to turn it over to our Director of Finance, Mrs. Margaret Lindsey, to provide the report.
Good afternoon, Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor Maguire, members of council. Just a few numbers for you this afternoon, since we've had a lot today with numbers already. This is the March, so while March is nine months in, several of our revenue sources are only reporting either seven months, such as sales tax, or eight, and that's entirely So this is our largest chunk, if you will, of revenue, our general property taxes and our other local taxes. No real comments, any different from in prior months. I will say that, as I have mentioned before, we will be coming before you, the first meeting in June, with some estimates, let me rephrase that, with some adjustments to our budgeted estimates for certain revenue lines for increasing. Right now, I'm seeing several increases that we will bring to you to adjust the budget. The other side of that is we will be able to make some adjustments in expenditures, and that, so that our expenditures and revenue more match what we are actually receiving and spending. One item I do want to point out on this page, our public service tax, which is pretty much all-in for the year, especially personal property portion of public service corporation tax, our assessments are provided by the state, greatly exceeded what, greatly to me, is over $100,000. So it's not great, great, it's great, but that will provide us some opportunity to address some expenditures that also have come in more than anticipated. This is our other general fund revenue. There's one thing I want to especially point out to you, our miscellaneous revenue. We have a budget of $851 every, pretty much every year, and year-to-date, at $782. And $782 is overstated because we had two items that are normally grants and aid, Commonwealth, our communications tax, and our car rental tax got put in the wrong place, which happens from time to time. Subsequent to the March numbers, they have been moved up into grants and aid, Commonwealth. So next month, you will see miscellaneous go back to a little bit more normal, if you will, and grants and aid will have picked up what they properly owe, what they properly should have. We do have a number of things that, as money comes in, we certainly want the Treasurer's Office to deposit as quickly as possible. So between Finance and Treasurer's Office, there's often back and forth, this is a new item, or I'm not sure, or perhaps, in our case, or the Treasurer's and new staff are working on stuff that they've not in the past. This is not uncommon at all, and it's a nice interchange so that we can all know exactly what's hitting where. Whoops, sorry. So our expenditures, nothing is really a shout-out here, with the exception of health and welfare, that you can see is running a little warmer versus a nine-month target. As part of health and welfare is our Social Services Department, which has what I will call offsetting revenues. So if expenditures on mandated services, which are covered by the state, are running higher, our reimbursements will also run higher. So the thought being that, for the most part, not 100%, of course, we will have offset in both places. I will say that revenues almost always lag expenditures, so timing of that will be a little bit off, but that's something also beginning about now through end of August. We match almost dollar-for-dollar if we spend it, where's the reimbursement? So that is, that's coming up on the time of year that we are very carefully monitoring what should come in, given that, something that was spent. So for this month, I chose to show what is in our public safety category. These are all the different units and/or departments. So you can see that police and fire certainly have more than one area, and so that Chief Booth and Chief Hobak can best manage their areas. They have smaller buckets in the different ways that their scopes of work break out. The red items clearly are over budget, be no surprise, and I have one more slide that will make this a little bit more understandable. The purply-magenta colors are pushing up on that over budget. We have spoken many times in our budget work throughout the last several months of some challenges in what has been budgeted for overtime and temporary wages especially, and for the most part, that's what's reflected here. So instead of doing any one unit, I chose, and this is a little bit hard to see, I apologize, but it is on the agenda, so it can be pulled down and made easier to view, these are all just the overtime and temporary wages for each of the different units. And so you can see where, just for example, Police Investigation has spent $111,000 in round numbers on a budget of $116,000. So clearly, we've got some work to do in right sizing and getting a better match, and that's certainly been one of the core features of our fiscal '26 budget work to bring to you all. But I thought this could be a little bit useful to show where the big differences in that are. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or more likely, write them down and get them back out to you.
Thank you, Ms. Lindsey. Questions from council? Mr. Volleson?
Ms. Lindsey, I know that the sales tax runs a little bit behind, but are you guys seeing anything that's worrisome in the future, given our economic climate right now?
So the March has seven months, and we will pick up April, May, June, July, and August is all fiscal '25. I have looked at what April, which is posted, and of course, will be on the screen next month, and it didn't drop off, it didn't jump way up, it's running about the average for the year. So if we took what is sitting, whoops, in sales tax, the $17,203,000, and divide it by seven, and then multiply by 12 to get an estimate, we'd be a little short. Not a lot short, but coming in just under $29 million for the year. It's still a little early because the summer months tend to be a little more. Inflation backed off for a while, but is, I will say, stable. It is certainly not continuing to drop, which for me translates into somewhat higher prices. And then we have the whole tariff situation. So depending on what it is you're making a purchase, you may or may not have any impact from those. I would, I would believe personally that we will have some impact from that, but just, I have not had tariffs since turning 18 to be any measurement of, or studied in college. It was a term on one test, and then I could not think about it.
Thank you. I don't have necessarily a question, but I was engaging with some citizens, and they were inquiring about kind of like our monthly reports, and how do y'all know how much is? And I was like, well, they give, I'm like, Ms. Finance Director, Ms. Lindsey gives a report, you know, once a month, you know, they show it at the meetings, and they're like, what are you talking about? And so my question is, could we make this document, like this file, available online, and then take like the snippet of you going from kind of start to finish, explaining it with our questions included, and put that online as well so that citizens could easily assess the monthly reports to see everything, and then also hear you explain it so that they can become educated and engaged about what's going on? So I just want to throw that out, because I had that idea over the weekend.
Yeah, it's currently online, but you're saying taking it, taking it a step further?
Yeah, kind of like extrapolating it and kind of just putting it like solely and making a page or something, and, you know, I'm not an IT web design guy, but, you know, just like, hey, this is the monthly report, and then they can access it right there.
Having just listened to Roanoke Valley TV's presentation, I'm getting some ideas. We also can very easily add these reports, wouldn't have sound or explanations, but there can be a repository on the finance webpage. So if someone just wanted to look back a year ago and so forth, they could do some more comparisons and all that, and we can do that very easily, very quick. We work on the other.
All right, awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lindsey. We have several items recommended for action. The first is the acceptance and appropriation of a $70,000 grant fund from the National Main Street Center for Unlocking Capital on Main Street program. We have one measure, an ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and a second.
Move the ordinance?
Hey, Ms. Powers, move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Nash, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of the Unlocking Capital on Main Street program grant made to the city of Roanoke by the National Main Street Center appropriating 2024 through 2025 grant funds, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute any necessary documents necessary to accept such grant, and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance by title.
Any discussion by council? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Maguire?
Aye.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. B is the acceptance of additional Virginia Department of Transportation funds, authorization to execute VDOT documents, and appropriation of funds for the Greenway Connection along Riverland Road project. There is one measure, an ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and a second.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of additional funding from the Virginia Department of Transportation for the Greenway Connection along Riverland Road project to the city of Roanoke appropriating 2024 through 2025 grant funds, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute and file appropriate documents to obtain such additional funds, and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Any discussion from council? All right, Madam Clerk, we're ready to call the roll.
Vice Mayor Maguire?
Aye.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. Item C is the Aviation Drive Valley View Pedestrian Improvements Subsurface Utility Exploration Amendment. There is one measure, an ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and second.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager's issuance and execution of additional amendments to the city's contract with Timmins Group, Inc., for additional professional services for the Aviation Drive Valley View Pedestrian Improvements Project, authorizing the city manager or designee to take such actions and execute such documents as may be necessary to provide for the implementation, administration, and enforcement of such amendments to the above-mentioned agreement, as well as the agreement itself, and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Maguire?
Aye.
Mr. Nash?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Hagan?
Aye.
Mayor Cobb?
Aye. And the ordinance passes. Ms. Turner, I'll turn to you for any comments you may have.
Thank you. Mayor Cobb, I have three comments. Number one, in response to persistent damage caused by truck traffic at the eastbound and westbound off-ramp ramps of I-5, excuse me, 5A to 1 along Orange Avenue, the Transportation Division implemented infrastructure improvements to enhance pedestrian safety and mobility. The damage resulting from the trucks with 53-foot trailers frequently riding over the curb and sidewalks due to the cloverleaf interchange geometry and exit speeds prompted the installation of a seven-inch-thick reinforcement concrete apron between the new mountable curb and the sidewalk. The upgrades included over 300 linear feet of new curb and gutters, and more than 700 square feet of new sidewalk, all completed during nighttime hours to minimize traffic disruption. Number two, Virginia Infrastructure has commenced construction of a new exterior concrete ramp at the municipal South Building to provide ADA-compliant access to the Treasurer, Real Estate Valuation, and the Commissioner of Revenue offices via the Church Avenue entrance. Scheduled for completion within 90 days, the project is a significant step in improving accessibility to municipal services for individuals with mobility challenges. As part of a broader initiative to enhance public infrastructure, additional improvements planned for the summer include updated pavement markings along Church Avenue to establish an ADA-accessible parking space near the new ramp. And the last comment is, the planning, building, and development team had a major cleanup initiative over the entire city. A total of 266 tires were removed through the hard work and collaboration and dedication of the team. This effort marks a significant step forward in proving the safety and cleanliness of the city. So hats off to the team, and those complete my comments for today.
Thank you very much. Good news. All right, now we'll turn to number, sorry, the city attorney, who has a couple of amendments that we've already been briefed on. The first is an amendment of the City Code, Article 1, in general, Chapter 32, Taxation Code of the City of Roanoke, creating new Section 32-8.6, providing for tax exemption of real and personal property owned by nonprofit organizations. There is one measure, an ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and second.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance amending and reordaining Chapter 32, Taxation Code of the City of Roanoke, as amended by adding new Section 32-8, exemption of real and personal property owned by nonprofit organizations. Section 32-8.1, application. Section 32-8.2, exemption of designation. Section 32-8.3, exemption of classification. Section 32-8.4, rules and regulations for administration, application for exemption. Section 32-8.5, triannual review of exemptions and retention of exempt status. Section 32-8.6, service charge in lieu of taxation to provide for the processes and procedures by which city council will consider requests made by nonprofit organizations for tax exemptions, for tax exemption of their real or personal property as authorized by Section 58.1-3. as authorized by Section Fifty-Eight point one dash three six five one. Code of Virginia, providing for an effective date and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
Any discussion by members of counsel? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item B is the amendment of the City Code regarding Chapter Two Administration, Article Eight, Gifts, Grants, Devices, and Bequests to the City, Section Two dash two six three, Acceptance or Rejection Generally. We have one measure and ordinance, and I need a motion in a second, please.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance amending and reordaining Section Two dash two six three, Acceptance and Rejection Generally of Chapter Two Administration, Article Eight, Gifts, Grants, Devices, and Bequests to the City, Code of the City of Roanoke, as amended, amending the section, establishing an effective date, and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Any discussion by counsel? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Before we move to item eight, I need to pause for just a moment to ask our attorney a question. Yes? All right, we have two items, actually, under eight. The first is a report of the Roanoke City School Board requesting appropriation of funds for various educational programs and a report of the city manager recommending that city council concur in the request. Donna Caldwell, Director of Accounting, spokesperson. There is one measure of budget ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
Yes. An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth Federal and Private Grant for various educational programs, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2024, 2025 school grant fund appropriations for fiscal year 2025, and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
Any discussion by counsel? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. The second item is an introduction of an ordinance to appropriate funding for educational purposes in order to fund certain school board budget shortfalls in fiscal year 2025 and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance. This will appropriate capital funds of continuing and new capital projects for Roanoke City Public Schools. We will be holding a public hearing, as required by law, on May nineteenth. I don't know yet if we've determined which meeting that will be held in. Will that be the two o'clock or the seven?
Seven is typically when we hold the public hearing.
Okay. So that will be held on May nineteenth at seven o'clock. So that is the nature of this ordinance that we're introducing today. The total in the ordinance is seventeen million, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars. Again, this is an appropriation for current or continuing and new capital projects for Roanoke City Public Schools. So today, we are just introducing this, and we'll have a public hearing and a vote on this on May nineteenth at seven o'clock P.M.
And Mr. Mayor, because such an amount of almost eighteen million dollars would be an amendment of more than one percent of the budget, that's why the public hearing is required. So we will follow that process so that the council can consider the matter on May nineteenth.
Thank you. All right. We don't have any unfinished business or introductions. We do have one additional resolution that I will present. Madam Clerk, do you have a copy of this resolution?
Yes, I do.
Okay. I'm going to ask that you read the, I think the opening paragraph states the intention of this resolution. So if you will read the opening paragraph, we need, I need a motion and a second on the resolution before us. This is a walk-on resolution.
Is this the school?
Yeah, this is regarding school board appointments.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Volleson, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Nash, thank you. Madam Clerk, if you'll please read the title paragraph.
The appointments?
Mm-hmm. For the school board. Okay. Yeah, just the school board.
The school board, okay. Here's the school board. Resolution Appointing Mary Franny Appel and Joyce W. Watkins as School Board trustee for the Roanoke City School Board for terms commencing July first, 2025, through June thirty, 2028.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Any discussion by counsel? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just have a question. On the previous ordinance that you introduced. Do we need to vote on to schedule to and advertise a public hearing?
It's not required by law. I understand that typically, council does do that on the consent agenda, but given the introduction that was done, I believe we have direction for council to schedule a public hearing.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you for the question.
Yeah.
Sounds like we're good. All right, then we'll move on to motions and miscellaneous business. Are any additional comments by members of counsel?
Sorry, what was that? What was that? I'm sorry.
Additional comments by members of counsel. All right, we'll move on to our appointments and reappointments, and I'm going to ask Vice Mayor McGuire to read the appointments into the record. At the conclusion of that, when the city clerk calls the roll, if you will please respond by saying all nominees.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. To the Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals for a three-year term, Yvonne Johnson and a residency waiver is required. Also, to the Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals, also for a three-year term of office, reappointing Robert Pilkington, also a residency waiver is required for him as well. To the Mill Mountain Advisory Board for a three-year term of office, appointing Richard Kegley. To the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a three-year term of office, Amy Thompson. To the Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge Board of Directors, a one-year term, reappointing Allison Oakey. And also to the Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge Board of Directors, reappointing for a one-year term, Jennifer Eddy. And to the Western Virginia Water Authority for a three-year term, reappointing Michael Loveman.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Nash.
All nominees.
Mr. Volleson.
All nominees.
Ms. Powers.
All nominees.
Mr. Hagan.
All nominees.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
All nominees.
And Mayor Cobb.
All nominees. And there being no business, further business to come before city council, today's meeting is adjourned.